I call this meeting to order. As Chairman of the Select Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is meeting electronically utilizing the Zoom platform. Previously gave notice to the public of how to access this meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at lee.lnh.org. If anyone has a problem with access, please call 603-659-5414, extension 312. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Let me point out to everybody, this meeting is a meeting, a workshop meeting, between the Town Hall Renovation Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So, uh, let's start with the Select Person Casper.
Here and alone.
Select Person Bugby.
Here and alone.
I, Carrie Brown, Selectman, here and alone. I will now, since this is specifically a meeting, a workshop meeting, between the Town Hall Reservation Committee and the Board of Selectmen, I will turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Town Hall Committee, Mr. Scott Bugby.
Oh, how gracious, Mr. Brown. Mr. John, can you share your screen with the presentation, please? Oh, sorry. All right, so welcome, everybody. First thing we wanted to address is, why does the Town Hall Renovation Committee present a capital improvements funding plan? Good question. Our particular charge involved renovating the Town Hall and looking at other improvements at Town Center. One of the things we found that all this stuff could not be done in isolation with the other needs that the town has in terms of capital expenditures going forward. So, one of the things that Mr. Tappin did is create this particular tool, and we're going to present it to you today. Hopefully, the Select Board will embrace it and use it. But I think it will be pretty evident in terms of when we get into this that this particular tool is going to show us that we can't have our take needed too. So hopefully, the Board will accept those particular proposals and go through the particular plan and at another meeting and go through each one of the particular items and determine if it wants to be included and how we're going to fund those particular things. So, and also just to mention, as John's going through this, if you have a question, please stop them. The people that are part of the participants of the thing can, you know, speak out. But Julie, if you would recognize anybody that happens to be attending and have them raise their hand and they can ask a question of John. Thank you.
Capital Improvement Funding Plan. This is a draft version of an Excel workbook that's referred to as the CIFP. CIFP Purpose. The CIFP is intended to provide the Select Board with a tool to immediately show the ramifications of decisions as they work through scenarios for funding the town's capital acquisitions and improvements. Features of the CIFP. The plan covers the current year and the next 20 years. That's a term that was chosen because of the fire apparatus lifecycle. The minimum deposits required to meet the planned needs are automatically calculated as the inputs are changed. The calculated deposit amounts are level, ignoring the time value of money up to the point where they can drop to a lower level. This is a conservative approach that recognizes that not all future costs have been identified. Any of the calculated deposit amounts can be overridden for any fund in any year and in either direction, up or down. And a large enough override will allow the end of year fund balance to go negative and show in a red cell with red font. That was intentional. That could be prevented in the spreadsheet, but I wanted to allow you to do an override, which would cause a negative fund balance, and then you can look at other things that you might want to change, like scheduling of an expense. Some capital improvement funding examples. Imagine that you had a fund with only two planned expenditures. The first is $50,000 five years from now, and the second is $25,000 10 years from now. Let's look at the fund balance as we go forward. The calculated deposits would be $10,000 per year for the first five years, and then the $50,000 expense is paid for. Calculated deposits of $5,000 per year would continue for the next five years, and then the $25,000 expense is paid for. With no more expenses, deposits would drop to zero for the rest of the plan. This assumes that no margin has been specified for the balance to remain in the fund. But what if the order of those expenses was reversed? First, the $25,000, and then the $50,000. You wouldn't want to just reverse the order of the deposits, starting out with depositing $5,000 per year and then having to change after five years to $10,000 per year. No, the calculated deposits would be $7,500 per year for the first five years, then the $25,000 expense is paid for, and that same amount, $7,500 per year, would continue for the next five years. But at the end of year 10, the $50,000 expense can be paid for. And again, with no more expenses, deposits would drop to zero for the rest of the plan. Notice that any interest to be earned on the fund balances during the planned years is not counted on in the calculation. This is intentional. If the Town of Lee was a project of fixed duration that was not going to continue after the 20 years, and if we knew all of our expenses at the outset, then this would be a plan that would cause us to deposit more than we need to. But the Town of Lee is expected to continue. We know that new expenses will be added even within the 20 years. So by only counting interest as it's earned each year, we're making some allowance for those additional expenses that we know will come in. Workbook Structure. Workbook presently has 18 worksheets. The first worksheet, called First Sheet, has only three user inputs: planned fiscal year, last allowable fiscal year for a data entry, and the interest rate earned on deposits for the current year. Throughout the workbook, user inputs are in blue. There is one exception to that that I'll show you when we get to actually looking at the worksheet. After the first worksheet, there's a worksheet for each fund. Town buildings and renovating Town Hall have been combined. There's also an extra worksheet. Then comes an End of Summation Worksheet. All of the fund worksheets must be between the First Sheet and the End of Summation Worksheet. If they are, then new worksheets can be added or deleted without having to change any of the equations. Then comes the worksheet that actually does the summation, and a lookup table of bond rates. And finally, a summary table with a chart that shows the annual increase rates that were entered on each fund worksheet. Here's a view of the Town Building's Town Hall Worksheet. Fund name and purpose are shown. The beginning balance for the current fiscal year is entered. And unlike all entries, it's in blue. From this amount and the interest rate on First Sheet, this year's expected interest is calculated. The planned deposit or that's been approved for this year is entered. You may not want the plan to draw the fund down to a balance of zero, but there's a place to enter what minimum balance is desired for each fund. The minimum ending balance for any year is specified as a percentage of that year's expenditure, in this case, 10%, with an upper and lower limit. In this example, the withdrawal for 2022 is $276,640. It isn't. I just updated that. It's $280,485. So the calculated safety margin is $28,049. So in this case, if the expenditures have been high enough, the fund would not let it go below $28,049. There's a place to enter the expected annual increase rate for purchases from this fund. We'll have some more on that later. Each expense item is entered along with the planned date and the current cost, and then the future cost with compound increases is calculated. A B or an X entered in this column indicates that the funding is to come from a bond or that the funding is not planned. A blank cell indicates that the cost is paid from the fund. And I'll have some more about the B and X entries a little later on. The calculated required minimum deposit is shown here. But that calculated deposit can be overridden by an entry here. The year-end fund balance is shown here, and the total for all fund deposits is shown. This way, as you're making a change to one fund and changing the deposits that you're putting into that one fund, you can at the same time see what the total is for all the funds. Annual Cost Increase. Annual Cost Increase has three components. There's inflation and real price change. Together, those are called escalation. And there's also a third component that's due to changes in quality or features of the product. Annual cost increases by product, so each fund has its own cost increase value. And annual cost increase varies with time. That's difficult to predict, so only a constant value is used for each fund. To give you some examples of actual annual cost increase, these were taken from a fire department equipment, partly because it has been large increases, but also it's easy to find the data for because the fire department replaces, for the most part, like equipment with like equipment. So they replace the old Engine 1 with a new Engine 1. For Utility 1, which is scheduled for purchase in 2023, the cost increased by 3.54% per annum from 2010 to 2021. For the Tanker, the cost increased by 4.68% per annum from 1995 to 2015, even after they got a $50,000 trade-in credit in 2015. So the actual cost of the equipment without that credit was even higher. The self-contained breathing apparatus cost increased by 4.94% per annum from 2001 to 2020. An Engine 1 cost increased by 6.8% per annum from 1999 to 2021, even with the $25,000 trade-in credit. The recently purchased Tanker, the SCBA's, and the engine have significant quality or feature improvements over the previous units. Each one of those can do more and provide better service than the models that they replaced. And that is certainly a significant part of the cost increase. Some more of the Town Building's Town Hall Worksheet. There are no user entries in this area. The column totals, we've moved down, in this case, down to row 45. Column totals are shown here, as well as number of new bonds. Bonds are only shown and only available in the Town Building's Town Hall Worksheet. Interest rates for new bonds come from the lookup table worksheet. The total of the fund deposit and the bond payments is shown here. And the total of the deposits for all the funds and all the bond payments is shown here. Down here, there are 42 rows that calculate the required deposits, but 40 rows are hidden just to keep the worksheet cleaner. The bond financing option is only available in the Town Building Town Hall Worksheet. No more than three new bonds can be entered. That could, of course, be expanded. The current version is hard-coded for a 20-year level principal bond, with the first year's interest in principal payments occurring in the fiscal year after the year entered for that item. That is, after the year, the fiscal year in which you received the money. The first half-year interest period for the Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank bonds varies. It's usually longer than six months. I have seen it near seven months, but that variation is not considered in this version. Those items not funded. Line items that are not funded should be kept on the list unless they are obsolete or judged not worth the cost even if the funds were available. Why? Well, funding may become available from sources that are not currently known. I do know of an example where that happened with highway funds, where the state made available some funds that had to be used for a highway project that was not currently funded. But the bigger reason, I think, is that items added to the list in future years should compete for funding with all the items that have been added to the list, not just with those currently planned for funding. Bond Rates Worksheet. This is the lookup table that the Town Building's Town Hall Fund Worksheet goes to find a bond rate. Current fiscal year is entered here, and predicted bond interest rates are entered here. And then their graph to give you an easier-to-see picture of what you're predicting. Again, in blue, these are user inputs. And I should emphasize that throughout this, I focus mostly on trying to make the worksheet work and getting the formulas correct, getting data validation working, and I have not focused as much time on the numbers that are put in. The Total Annual Cost Increase Rate Summary Worksheet needs to have the name of every fund worksheet entered here, and the full name of the funds can be entered here for reference. Annual Increase Rate from each fund worksheet is shown and charted here. And this is for reference so that you can quickly look at how have you set those fund, those increases? How do they compare to one another? So that you see that they make sense as a group. We have some takeaways. The total cost emphasizes the need for a comprehensive, rather than a narrow view of one project in one year at a time. The total cost is so large that it kind of forces that on you. Proper sequencing is needed to eliminate do-overs. Over the next nine years, all of the buildings at Town Center are in play, including the building that we don't even have yet, an office building. So you certainly don't want to pay for some construction or landscaping or something that then a next phase disturbs and has to do over. And want to schedule tasks to reduce costs through efficient use of the trades. An example might be if you, as part of the tasks, you had painting the outside of more than one building. Well, you could save money by scheduling painting two buildings or three buildings at the same time, rather than doing them each one in a different year. And bonding will likely be required or preferred to better spread the cost over the lifecycle of some of the improvements or acquisitions. Without bonding, as you see when we get to the worksheet, the required deposits to the funds are very high. And with lifecycle costs, I mean, life cycles of some of the improvements, for example, if you build a new office building, that should be designed so that you essentially don't have to do anything to it for the next 20 years. So reasonable, you could make a good case for paying for that improvement with a 20-year bond. We also have some suggested next steps from the Town Hall Renovation Committee. These are things that we think we could do in just over a matter of a few weeks. We can refine some of the building costs, particularly those that are little more than guesses. Determine the conditions and costs for limited use of the Town Hall. This has been talked about. We've mentioned that it is if allowed. We need to investigate that and get a better handle on what the cost might be. Prepare the Parish House Public Input Request. This is something we talked about at the last meeting. We need to prepare that request so that it can be submitted to the Select Board for the Select Board to approve before we send it out to the public. Do an evaluation of the energy needs at Town Center. With all of the buildings in play, with all of the site work in play, there's opportunities for evaluating electrical energy needs, placement of solar panels, with a new well required, and with several buildings that are planned to have heat pumps. There's a possible opportunity for earth-coupled heat pumps to reduce energy costs. So evaluation of energy needs at Town Center is something that the committee could work on over the next few weeks. And then when the responses come back about public input for the uses for the Parish House, the committee would summarize those responses to present to the Select Board and also back to the public. Some suggestions for the Select Board. And here, the timeframe is different. This is not, unlike for the committee, which is something we can do over the next few weeks. This is months. Evaluate the items in the CIFP and determine what will be funded and how it will be funded. And update and extend the charge of the Town Hall Renovation Committee. So are there questions? Anybody have questions before we move on to actually doing, sharing the workbook, Excel workbook?
I have a question, John.
Sure.
I have a couple of comments first. Number one, as we move through this, I got to tell you, it's a fantastic tool, and I appreciate all the work you've put into it because it really is a fantastic tool as far as managing the budgets, et cetera. My question to you would be, who maintains it?
So initially, I think I'd suggest that I work as your Excel data entry clerk, so that you might schedule meetings where the spreadsheet is shared, you or department heads are making inputs, and I make the changes. I'm expecting the one thing that might come up. I know this happens when I write my own spreadsheets. As I start to use them, I find there's features missing. There's things that, ah, I wish you could tell me this. Well, you might find things that this workbook doesn't tell you that you want. So that would be another reason why I think initially I would be your data entry clerk, Excel author, so that if you ask, can it do this or can it do that? Or can we make this change? I could go away, make those changes, and if I can figure out how to do them, and bring it back to you. Going forward after that, we need to talk about it. It's up to what the Board wants to do, what the Town Administrator wants to do. It's even possible that in the future, if this becomes a really useful tool and you want to expand its use, maybe there's some commercial software out there that might do a better job for you, something that at this point you might not be able to justify the cost of. So this may not be the same tool that you're using two or five or 10 years from now. But that's my picture of how it would proceed, at least for the next few months or year.
Thank you.
Anything else? I don't know, Julie, do we have any questions?
No. Hey, John, this is Ben. I have a question. The example you used on the fire department equipment, you know, those are, those annual increases were pretty hefty over 10, 20 years. So I was just trying to figure that out. Like, one of them was greater than 100%. So if we're told that a fire truck costs, if we're starting to save up for a fire truck in the year 2020, and we want it in 2030 or 2040, and we're told it's a half a million in 2020, it's really, could be, it could be a million. Is that right?
Yeah.
It's 100% increase over 10 years or 20 years or whatever the window is. So do we actually, are we supposed to save the future cost and be putting away, you know, 100 grand a year for the fire truck? Because it's going to be...
Okay, so, yeah. Right now, Tanker One, which was purchased in 2015, is scheduled to be replaced in 2035. Today's cost is $650,000. And at 5% per year, the 2035 cost is 1,286,000.
Yeah.
So, yeah. It's, it's within $44 of doubling.
But we as a town should be putting away 100 grand a year because it's now a million, 1.2 million dollar purchase instead of 50 grand a year, right?
Well, fire equipment, this year we appropriated 175,000.
Okay.
And this spreadsheet is showing that for next year, it should be 245,000.
Yeah.
And
This is crazy stuff. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, now, I went and looked up in the Town Records, Town Annual Reports to find where those items were purchased previously, where they were approved. And then I went and looked in the annual reports for the, the Trustees of Trust Funds reports to see how much was withdrawn from those funds to get, you know, what was actually spent. For, there's probably other resources available online, you know, for what has been the, yes, the, the cost increases for things like fire equipment. For highway equipment, I couldn't do that because for highway equipment, we have a combination where we've purchased used equipment, we've purchased new. When you purchase used, I don't know if those two, to the quality of those two used pieces of equipment that were separated by 10 years, were they equivalent? You know, so I don't know that it's apples to apples.
Difference between dump trucks and loaders and you know, the high-end, you know, fire, you know, fire and safety equipment. It's, it's, it's very important that that, you know, that equipment be proper and
Yes, and, and with the fire equipment, there are very big differences in, in the, the features, the capabilities. I mean, the simple thing is just look at the, the first fire station that the town built. Front to back, it was 30 feet deep. The trucks fit in there. The next fire station we built was 40 feet deep because the old one wasn't big enough and so forth. The old trucks,
Oh, yeah.
There were four firefighters in the cab and now there's six firefighters in the cab. The old ones, the firefighters had to get out of the cab, open a cabinet, get out their breathing apparatus. Now they can exit the cab with their breathing apparatus because it's in the cab with them and so forth.
It's good to know, good, good information to know that.
Costs have similar things.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else or I will go to share the spreadsheet? Oh, whoops. I have to reduce the size of this. Okay, so I'm sharing a spreadsheet which I normally look at on my full screen. So I'm not sure how this is, I've reduced it. So is this visible to everybody? Here, here we're looking at the fire equipment because that's what I was just talking about. We can go back to the Town Buildings, Town Hall. There, this is the one place where the user entries are not in blue. These entries in blue at the top, the first round of row 21, all came from the CIP. So I just copied from the CIP, the items, the year and the cost, today's cost. And then below that are the items that we've entered. And just, just to make them stand out, I put them in this brick red color. And there's 21 of them that have been added. And most of them have a dollar figure that's entered as a constant. There's a couple of them here, the Town Hall Rehabilitation, where I've split that into two years with 45% of the cost in each fiscal year. And there is actually a little equation in there to take 45% of the 580,000, which is what we have in the assessment right now. With the assumption that we would be able to get 10% from a grant. And we think that's probably the maximum we'd be able to get. My approach or rather our approach to this has been to put in all that we know about town buildings. So what we know from previous like energy use assessments for the Public Safety Complex, I asked our Public Works Manager about all of the buildings, saying, you know, anything, doesn't matter what it costs, how small, how large, how far away, to try to get all of it in. There's one item here, a cemetery shed. I don't have a date or a cost because I just, I only asked recently about it. He hasn't gotten back to me yet. But my, our approach was to put in everything that we could identify with the best that we could come up with for cost. And you can see the result. This year we put in 104,500. 100,000 of that was in one warrant article. And then the 4,500 was the amount that we received from New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for the assessment that was done on the Parish House. And this is showing that next year, if you are going to pay for all of these things from the fund, except for part of the cost of the office building coming from a bond, next year you need to deposit $441,000 just into town buildings. And this row down here shows you that when you add in all of the other funds, it's over a million dollars. There's no way that we think that that's what's going to happen. But first order was just to put all these things in that way. I can show you what happens here when this bond, this cell, if I delete it. Now, when you go up here, it says $558,000 next year. There is, for many of these entries, there is data validation. So a fiscal year, if you accidentally put in 2020, 30 instead of 2030, there's data validation to say fiscal year must be a whole number from the current year to last year shown on the first sheet. So cancel and go back because that was just a typo. In this row, if you, there is a pull-down menu, so you, you can only put in Bs or Xs. If, if you try to put in something else again, there's data validation to correct that. I've tried to put in data validation so that the inputs that you make make sense because if incorrect inputs are allowed, then you can find that you're not actually accounting for everything that you think you're accounting for. The, when you look down here at the bond section, right now in the bond section, the only two bonds that are shown are the two that we have currently, Safety Complex and Transfer Station. If you take the office building, which has been divided up into two pieces, this is just the assumption that the office building costs one and a half million dollars. And it's divided into a 900,000 and a $600,000 piece. And this $600,000 piece, if you make that a bond, there is now in the bond section, Town Office Building from Bond, 2029, 3.5%. And when you go out, you see where the bond payments start. And that $600,000 was chosen so that this first pawn, bond payment would be very close to the amount that, of the annual cost of the lease of the office building that we have right now. It's $60,000 a year now and there's two extensions possible, three years each with already prescribed escalations. It brings it up near that $69,000 figure. And this is just rounded off to 600,000 and it works out close. You can have other bonds, so you could do the whole thing from a bond as if they were two separate bonds. If the bond was in a different year, put in something ridiculous like next year. You can see next year it goes and pulls the rate from that lookup table. Most recently, 20-year bonds at the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank went for just a little under 1.6%. All of the other, all of the other funds that you make deposits to are here. And this is where for some of them, you might want to do something different with this safety margin. For something like town buildings, where the costs, some of the costs are very high, the $5,000 lower limit, the $50,000 upper limit might make sense. For something where the costs are much lower, you may want to have a much smaller upper limit. For accrued benefits. Accrued benefits, this is historically accrued benefits, the average over the last 14 years and the median are pretty close to about $14,000. So I put these in at $15,000 as if it was going to be the same every year. But this is one that goes, we've had years when it's been zero. We had one year when it was over 40,000. So this might be one where you want, you don't want to draw that down low. You want to have a very high minimum just in case it's needed because you can't predict when it might be. There could be other funds where you set those down at zero because you don't see a reason to prevent drawing the fund down to zero. I should point out that drawing fund down to zero is, is just fine. It does not eliminate the fund, the fund still exists. It just doesn't have any money in it. To discontinue a fund, you actually have to, the legislative body actually has to vote on it. Other features, well, you can see, you can see it right here in the calculated deposits. We've used conditional formatting. So the calculated deposit is 16,534. Next year, it's a little bit lower, 16,614. And that continues at the same amount. So I used a gray, grayed out font just to make it obvious that that continues at the same amount until, that one doesn't go down. Bad example. Let's look at Transfer Station. Transfer Station, $82,000. That continues until in 2031, it goes down to 59,000. 2037, it goes down to zero. And this is where is part of my justification for not counting on the interest that you might earn. It's not just that you can't predict it. Over the past, since 2008, the funds have earned at a high point around a near 2.5%. Right now we're down at 1.5%. By the beginning of next fiscal year, we'll probably be down to 1% or less. But it's not just that you can't predict it. It's also, we know in 2037, for the Transfer Station, this is not going to be a zero. There is, there's going to be additional expenses that, that aren't in here yet. I think I can, I could, we could go through this, I could boil you to death. So what else do people want to see? What else, what other questions are there?
John, do you have a total? If somebody asks you, what's the total capital commitment that the town is looking at over the next, whatever it is? An annual, you know, I know you touched on these, but you know, we need some elevator speech kind of numbers here that the town is looking at $10 million over the next 20 years that we have to fund or bond. We need to be putting, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year away to keep our capital savings going, et cetera. There you go.
Well, we have here, this is, this is the total deposits that are needed to all funds. Total withdrawal from all funds. Well, what you're, I think what you're actually asking for is I go back to say Town Buildings and come down to the, the bottom here. For all the entries for Town Buildings, for today's cost, it totals 3.5 million. The future cost is a total of almost 4.2 million. I think maybe you're asking for, what is the total that 4.2 million? What is that if you add it up for all, everything in the workbook? Us highway plus. Good question. I don't have that total.
I think we should. I mean, I
Yeah, so, so this is, this is exactly what I was talking about when you start to use it and someone says, can you tell me this from it? And hmm, I never thought to ask.
I look at it all as a liability, not as, I mean, it's, you know, what is the capital liability? Now, obviously, it's, it's also investing and there's, you generate value from it in, in a good way. But it's an expense. So there's a, there's a number out there and we should have an idea what it is. It can always be changed and lowered and we can take things out and bond more and et cetera, like you said, but is it?
Well, that's, that's, that is a very good question.
Kind of segues into the next part of this when, when we're envisioning how this is going to work. And this is just a suggestion to the Select Board that the Select Board go through each one of these items and That the select board go through each one of these items and see if the select board is willing to one included in this in this particular tool and if they're going to fund it and when they're going to fund it. Some of these are kind of educated swags, if you will, by the committee. So there would have to be some additional research on some of these. So I think the first, first thing that we would suggest is the select board go through each one of these. Sit down when having meeting with the appropriate people, department heads or whatever. And say, okay, are we going to do this? If the answer is yes, how much does it cost? Do we need to do any more research? And then do that for every single one of these items. And I think what you're going to find, depending on what you choose, is our wants outweigh what we can afford. And so we're going to have to go back through and make a decision in terms of what are we going to fund? When are we going to fund it and how are we going to fund it? So it's going to be a very sobering process. At least that's how I'm envisioning. But it's going to make us, force us to make some critical decisions on what we're going to do going forward. And we can't have our cake and eat it too. So we're going to have to make some decisions based on that particular and that particular tool. Cause I think that tool is going to point it out that, you know, we can't have our cake and eat it too. We're going to have to make the decision on what we're going to fund and what we're going to support and what we're not going to support.
So we can, we can assume that those numbers are all hard numbers?
No, that's what I'm saying. Some of those are kind of educated guesses. Some of them are hard numbers.
Well, it's tougher to make a decision off of an educated guess about what we're going to do going forward.
Yep. So maybe that's like, say, for instance, there's something in the highway department and we say, well, that kind of looks good, but we need some more information. And then we can send somebody off to do some more investigation. If that's, you know, Mr. Bullock, or if that's somebody else. They can go out and do that and then get back to us. So I think that process is going to be an extended process. Go ahead.
So for all of the other funds, highway equipment, roads and bridges, fire equipment, et cetera. All of those costs came from the CIP. So they're as good as, as the CIP. For the recent purchase of the roll off truck that was, that was approved. Hasn't been purchased yet, but the purchase has been approved. Those are the actual numbers from the quote that you received. Where the numbers are not as good is in the town buildings. And those vary from numbers from the architect, from the assessment that we have for town hall. Where we have the architect's opinion of probable cost. To, so that's fairly good. To some site work where we have previously had two cost consultants give us cost estimates. And I have taken those cost estimates, adjusted them for the time for a couple of years. And then also adjusted them for the size, like the size of pavement areas and so forth. So those are fairly good. And then there's others. And, and at another time, we could go through it item by item. There's others where it's my fairly quick guess. And, and I can identify each one of them, which is, you know, where it came from. And some of that is what I said. The, our town hall renovation committee should work on over the next few weeks. To try to shore up, get some better, some more information behind those numbers.
Mr. Chairman, Karen Rossi has her hand raised.
I'm sorry?
You see Karen Rossi has her hand raised to speak?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. What's the difference between this plan and their CIP plan?
In, in its function and how it would be used?
Yes.
Okay, so the CIP function established in state statute is that the CIP committee is independent from the governing body. And the CIP committee makes their recommendation to the governing body. The governing body has the responsibility for deciding what are they going to fund and what are they not going to fund? In that, it's very much like the advisory budget committee. Where the advisory budget committee makes their recommendation. But you've seen the process. The board, it is a recommendation. And state statute says that the capital improvement program developed by the capital improvement committee is a recommendation to the selectmen, to the governing body to use in making their budget. So the process that I've seen happen before is the select board looks at the recommendation from the advisory budget committee. They look at the CIP. And they look at the, what effect that has on the taxes. And then they decide, yes, we can do this or no, we got to take this piece out. When they've made those changes, like take this piece out, change this date, change this amount. They've never had a tool that shows them, if you do that, what happens? If you decide, you know, if, if, for example, the CIP says that you should put a hundred thousand dollars towards some fund and the board decides to make it fifty thousand. There is no mech, there hasn't been a mechanism that shows them exactly what happens. So this is a mechanism that the board could use. And, and this is something that I would expect the board would use as part of the budget setting process. And then I think it's also a tool that they would use. Like just a few weeks ago, when they were debating purchasing the roll off truck. Well, at that time, if they had this tool, it had been, you know, was functioning and it had all the right numbers in it. They could have just added, as I have now, the cost of the roll off truck. And then look to see how is that affect the other planned purchases for the, the transfer station? Because right now that's something that they can't, they don't have a way of assessing. There isn't, there isn't a mechanism for the select board to direct the CIP committee to go back. Come to our meeting and redo this for us in real time as we decide whether or not we're going to buy this truck and how it's going to affect other things.
So do you see this being used in conjunction with the CIP or getting rid of the CIP?
I think that it can be used in conjunction with, it would as I see it, it would have to be used sequentially. Meaning in the same way that advisory budget committee recommendation has to come to the select board before the select board is then doing their deliberation. CIP would have to come in in time to give the select board the time to enter that and then decide is that what they're going to do or not? When they start looking at, at those numbers. How does that go with the operating budget? What does that do to our tax rate? And so forth, those kinds of deliberate, those kinds of deliberations that they go through. It's I at one time, I, I thought that the, that there was a need for the select board to be to have much more influence on what went into the CIP. And that's until I read the state statute. Which, which says that the, the CIP is independent and the purpose of the CIP is to be a recommendation to the board. So that means the board is not supposed to be micromanaging the CIP to say change this number and change this date.
But the system that we had going in the past was that, that we weren't putting things on like all these buildings. The CIP didn't include all of these things.
This, that's another feature here is that in this, the select board is free to make up its own rules. I have seen times in the past. I think the record out of town buildings capital reserve fund, I saw one year when we spent over seventy thousand dollars out of town buildings capital reserve fund on items that were not in the CIP at all. Meaning that the board had not approved any plan for saving money toward those things that were eventually approved for being spent out of that fund. So with this, the board would be free to make up its own rules on if it wants to put in items that cost a thousand dollars, it can put them in. If it wants to put in items that, you know, it makes up his own rules. As, as to what's included. My very, very strong recommendation is that all significant expenditures that are, that are to come from town created trust or reserve funds be entered in something like this. Including those things that are not, not in the CIP because they're, they're truly not capital expenditures. Accrued benefits is not a capital expenditure.
Well, but once this spreadsheet is updated through the budget process. Whatever is, is done to what the CIP recommended then has to circle back and get input into the CIP so that there's an accurate starting point for the next year. Right?
I don't see a need for that.
Well, the, the CIP people will still take the starting or the ending balances and that's how they, you know, start their particular process, I assume. So I know Karen, you can tell us, but usually go and find out what the balances are on all the, the funds that you're looking at. And that's how you start your process, don't you?
Yes. So what we do is we just compare to make sure they're correct, that the deposits went in as we had. And then the withdrawals came in. Yep.
I, I don't, I don't foresee that process changing. That, that's still their process.
And I just want to defend, I guess, CIP for a second, that it's only as good as the information we're given.
Yep. Well, I, I don't, that's not where, at least that's not where I'm coming from. I think one of the things that I want this particular thing to do is, and for me, it's, it does multiple things. And one of them is it makes the select board sit down and say, okay, what are we doing? What are we supporting? What are we not supporting? And that sets out how things are going to proceed in the future. One of the things that the facilities committee and the town center vision committee, and now this committee has always come up against is people say, okay, I understand that, that kind of makes sense, but when's the other shoe going to drop? What's the rest of the plan? This particular tool will make us say, okay, what is the rest of the plan? So when we say, well, we'd like to renovate town hall and you do these improvements. This is what the rest of the things are going to happen. And I think as soon as the, the public kind of understands all that. That's the choice that you're going to have to make in terms of if they buy into it, if they don't buy into it. But I think the select board has to come out and say, okay, this is the plan. This is how we're proposing to fund it. What's your thoughts? How is this going to move forward? Maybe it doesn't move forward, but it's at least going to force us to look at what we have out there for commitments and liabilities. And how we're going to pay for those particular things.
But Scott, I think we're still faced with the same problem we have today. And that is, what is the validity of the numbers that we're, that we're putting in the plan?
Yeah, well, that's
That's, that's one of the biggest issues we have. Yeah. Okay. Well, the number is going to be this. If you look at the CIP, they take their best estimate, if you would, relative to escalation or what maybe the vendor tells them, here's what the price is going to be five years from now when you, when you take delivery. You know, that's, that's the other part of it that we, we need to somehow figure out, how far out do we go with numbers that we believe? We can, we can estimate them certainly, but there's a certain amount of risk in a number that you estimate depending on whether you go out five years, six years, seven years, eight years. So that's, that's part of the problem.
The bigger risk was that we didn't have any number. There was a zero. We didn't even
I don't think we've ever gone in with no numbers.
No, but I mean, there's whole buildings that weren't planned for. There's things we weren't planning for. So if our numbers are off slightly, that's a lot different than having no plan for something like, or no realization you have to save for it. So
I agree.
The better the number, the better. I agree.
And the thing, this is not a one and done, Mr. Brown. So I think what I'm proposing is we go through this and do the initial, you know, run through. And maybe that's something we do every year, you know, look at the ones that are kind of like, I don't know about that particular one. Because as the years progress, it's not like this plan is, okay, we're going to do it and we're going to finish in six months and that's it. We're not going to ever change it. This is a living document. So as it goes forward. The CIP committee from the planning board will give us updated stuff in terms of what to include that they're suggesting or they're proposing. But also in terms of, you know, maybe Steve gave us a, a number for a new loader is hundred and sixty thousand. And in two years, wow, geez, the price went up. We had this, you know, steel tariff and now it's a hundred and eighty thousand.
I, I, I don't get me wrong. I think it's a wonderful tool. You know, I, I think it brings a lot to the table. My concern is maintaining it.
Yep.
And, and, and taking the, the time to review it periodically. So that, so that we can see it evolve, so that we know what's happening, et cetera, et cetera. Prices change.
Yep.
And so the sheet needs to be updated, the program needs to be updated periodically by somebody with numbers that come from somewhere. And, and that makes it valid and it becomes a very, very good tool for us to use for capital planning. No doubts about it. I think great. The only other thing, I think, the only other cost that we add is we need to get a security guard for John. So nothing happens to him.
Yeah, but, but he has Anne, Anne, Anne is quite formidable. So
This is, this is another case where a question or a concern has made me realize that there's another feature that would be very useful. In the spreadsheet, we have fiscal year twenty twenty one cost. And there's a whole column of numbers, but there is nothing there that tells you how good is that number? There could be something that provides an estimate accuracy level. And some reference to, so that you can quickly tell oh, that number came from when we got three quotes from vendors in twenty twenty. That's a pretty good number. And then this other number, oh, that came from when I talked to Steve Bullock and he on the phone. And he hadn't heard of this before and he gave me a number off the top of his head. Cause there's some like that.
That'd be very helpful.
And that way you could, I haven't quite figured out, you know, what form this should take. But it seems like it would be very useful if there was something that told you by inspection in the worksheet. How good each of those is.
I, I think the other, you know, this, this is great. This is a great conversation because the other one of our shortcomings, I think, is negotiating skills. I mean, the, to, to somebody to just go to American La France or whatever and say, how much is this fire truck? And they say, oh, that fire truck's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, and that's the way it is. Well, no, it's not the way it is. And going into my background, with all due respect, selling airplanes. I can tell, I can tell you that might be the number to start with, but it sure isn't the number you finish with. And, and you know, that's another area I think that we need to, we need to polish our skills at is for, for large capital items. Is the negotiation of it.
Because if you are paying extra because of the advancements to maybe let's say a fire truck. Because it can fit two more people and we don't have enough staff to fit the fire truck with two more people. Why am I spending money on that? Why did, why did we not break down some of those costs? And if, if, if we're going to double, you know, these numbers, we do have to look at them a lot more carefully and think about these numbers, we do have to look at them a lot more carefully and think about what is our town need? Maybe this is the best fire truck possible. Or whatever else we're looking at, but, but do we need that? Is that the right choice for this town? Or could we wait for the guy who has that truck next door to come over?
The fact is, we're in a very good position to negotiate. I mean, if we just discuss the fire truck for a minute, there's only two vendors out there for fire trucks. It's no different than airplanes. There's only two for large airplanes, Airbus and, and, uh, Boeing. That's it. They are in a good negotiating position, believe me. And, and we need to take advantage of that and we need to sharpen our skills on that.
Yes. Good point.
I, I think this Ben, I think one of the more bigger picture things for me with this tool when we were working on it and just playing around with it is, I think that it drives more decision-making around what this town should be actually spending. The, the, the fact that you can project out the annual requirements to meet, meet the capital, uh, you know, the capital needs of the town for twenty years really hits home for like a, being able to look at things and should we actually be in that bit, like a business? When you cap, when you capital plan, you make decisions around, should you actually be spending that money or is it better? Like we've done with the, with the office, we, we, we're leasing space now. It's a sixty K a year effort. We've got nine years for that and who knows what after that, we're looking at maybe have building our own building. But when we lay all these costs out, which is why I asked this question, you know, if you were running a business, you would make a decision around, should we actually be investing in that? Are we going to get the return? That justifies the investment. And it's different with municipalities. I understand all that. But it's not a bad way to look at things, um, like using an example of, you know, police and fires or more sharing going on with towns. We don't have an, uh, we don't have ambulance, that's done by a third party now. So there's an example of where we don't have to do that expense and we just contribute to a fund to take care of it. So I think, um, you know, to get to Karen's question, I don't, I see this completely independent of the CIP process, and this is a tool for the select board to maybe take a step back and think more strategically for the town. And what should we, what should we be, uh, spending on and what we, what shouldn't we be spending on? Because of the long-term critical investments we have to make to keep doing this, to keep doing this. So I saw a lot of that in this, in this spreadsheet where we can do things like that. There's a lot of, a lot of power in it to quote, play with it. Um, and the other thing is that if we don't make the, the annual commitments of the capital funding on a yearly basis, John showed you, it just, it just starts piling up. You know, if we only contribute a hundred K instead of the two hundred K, next year, we got to put in four hundred K and it just keeps going up and up and up. So, um, which forces you then to make decisions as a select board that, oh, okay, well, what happens if we do take out that new loader? Cause we are going to not do that anymore. We're just, we're just having an outside vendor come and take care of that, you know, whatever it might be. You then, you're able to take that out and you'd see the number go down again. And so I, I kind of, there's a lot of power in that, that, and that's totally different than what the CIP folks roll up. They just, they just go and get the capital needs of the time. So we need them to, to always be doing that. And then you guys are the ones that have to decide when and if and how much, should we be doing that anymore and everything else? So um, I see them as two independent things, but the power is in this tool allows the, the select board to really do some serious planning, strategic planning.
Is it possible to also use, um, a, a personnel type to do this with personnel? And we've been talking a lot about, you know, in the future, how do we get people trained as other people are retiring and I think having some flexibility to look at those numbers would be great. I don't know. There's a way to take the model of what, what you already have, John, and then, and then use it for, you know, salaries and benefits and things like that and kind of look at, you know, we've added a lot of, um, people in different departments recently. And, and I'm thinking, okay, so now they're going to need raises and increases and things like that. And then, you know, if we could look and say, okay, but at this point, we really can't add to that department unless we're taking for somewhere else or things like that. Like is there a way to just to add to that?
Well, I, I think it's a great tool. I think, uh, you know, we, we could certainly do do improvements in, uh, in how we, we spend our money. There's always room for that. No matter where you are, there's always room for that. But to be honest with you, Ben, I don't think we buy a whole lot that's not in the best interest of the town.
But how we buy it, I think is the thing, you know, if we, if we look at the price you pay for ambulance, that's really reasonable. And if you look at the price you pay for other things, is that the best way to use that money for the town? I think is, is what Ben's trying to say.
Well.
Other ways to do it.
If you, if you, if you look at the cost of the ambulance versus the operation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the, 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 the total amount changes drastically. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think where I'm coming from is that, um, that's why I asked John the question of what is the total capital commitment or liability or whatever you want to call it, that, because it's continuing to grow. The big thing, the fact that this group had came to you guys is that we're off, we're off over on the side. We're a committee playing around with the building stuff. And like, like we said, it's not even in, we didn't, we didn't go to the CIP folks and say, hey, what number do you have for the building? There isn't a number for the new town office building. There isn't a number for the town hall. So we're giving you the numbers that we've pulled together over these last three years. It's important, if you're serious about wanting to do these, that they be on a spreadsheet somewhere. Karen can take the numbers and put them in and so that you guys see them through the formal CIP process. And you also have them shake hands with your, your own tool and then start playing around with those numbers. But the fact that we're looking at a million or a couple million dollars, uh, two and a half million dollars, if you throw town hall in there, uh, you've got the library and things like that. Those are some real numbers. That's a hell of a lot more than the, than a fire truck cost over the next nine years. So, um, so we thought you guys should see that. Here you go. Here's the spreadsheet. Have a nice time. You know, enjoy. So.
I think it's fabulous. I'm really glad we have it. I'm thrilled that we have this tool. I, I also want to be aware that we have some questions coming in on the, um, Q and A's. I don't know if anyone's been able to see those from Mr. Salatell and Gesowski.
Can everybody see the Q and A?
Do you want to read them?
I just don't know whether everybody can see it on the phone.
Keep in mind that with the current goal to become carbon neutral by twenty thirty, that you might be looking at electric, truck, fire trucks. You might be looking at electric fire trucks will undoubtedly make the cost a great deal higher than just the hundred percent increase. And the cost of charging stations, the sky is the limit with the new machinery now and the increased cost of new is much more than the CUL increases. He also, uh, Mr. Salatell also said, what was the date of the cost estimate from the building renovation materials cost? And did it reflect the approximate twenty percent increase because of COVID? Um, and then Mr. Gesowski said, does the CIP committee still exist? Was this tool shared with them prior to this webinar? We want to get this.
The first question, um, no, we haven't gotten any price on electric fire trucks. Um, but that would, could be, wow. That could be part of why, uh, the annual cost increase is even greater. I don't know. The second one, um, what was the date of the cost estimate from the building renovation materials? Okay. So, uh, that was the cost assessment, assessment that we have for town hall was pre-COVID. Um, and so there certainly are features there that may be needed that are not built into the cost. We did talk about the CIP committee. Yes, it still exists. No, this was not shared with them prior to the webinar. Mostly because it's, they're seen as independent.
But those are their numbers in this spreadsheet.
Yes, um, I.
Talked to them and got the numbers. Yeah.
Correct. I got a copy of the, um, the current version of the CIP. Um, and so all of the entries that were shown in blue, which means all of the entries and all of the, on the town buildings, town halls shown in blue and all of the entries on all of the other worksheets are came from the CIP except for those funds that are not in the CIP at all. Um, and then, uh, the roll-off truck, which, uh, was decided to be purchased after the CIP was, was finished. So of course it, it couldn't be in the CIP.
Is, is the question now to the board, is the question, do we, do we, uh, move to this tool, if you would, for management of the, of, uh, the, the capital planning?
That would be our suggestion. And with our recommendation that in the near future, that we sit down and go through each one of these items and see if we're going to fund it. And if so, how are we going to fund it? And when is it going to be put into the schedule?
Okay.
So, a- and just, just be aware, this is our recommendation to the select board. Select board can say the heck with this. We're not going to use this, you know, thank you for all your work, you know, have a nice day. Uh, we hope you don't do that. We don't, we don't do that. But it's a recommendation. You don't have to use it. Uh, I think it would be a good tool though. But I think the select board needs to embrace it and move forward with this. So.
I understand. Thank you.
Chairman Brown, uh, Pat Jenkins has her hand raised.
Oh, no. She's just playing with buttons.
Just playing with buttons.
You're on mute.
So we, we will, we will address this at the next select board meeting.
The next select board meeting?
Yep.
You don't want to have a separate one to go?
Vote right now or do you want to discuss it?
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to vote on anything. I think Mr. Budby just said that he, we were talking about, um, going through itemizing, the, the different things.
No, I was just, uh, I was just addressing, do we accept the tool? Do we accept the tool? We, we bring it into the system and, uh, understand how we're going to manage the tool. Um, but, but that we would do that at the next select board meeting.
You can do that. I would, I would recommend that if you're going to proceed and use this tool, that you have a separate meeting with the department heads to do this particular process. So something in addition to our regular administrative meetings for a select board on Monday.
Fine. And obviously you'd have to be, uh, one of the major spokesmen at that meeting because the question is not only how we implement it, how we maintain it, et cetera, et cetera, and how it's used between us and this, this and the CIP, et cetera.
Yep. Okay.
With other department heads, how is this different than when we do goals, um, and objectives and things like that in the budgeting period? Cause it's long-term. Is that the difference?
Yeah, it's long-term, but also these are specific things that they've asked for before. Like John said, you know, some of these are coming from the CIP, which they've already had a conversation with the CIP subcommittee out of the planning board. But some of these have been put on this particular list by the THRC. So there are things that we see that the buildings need some attention to.
Okay.
So for one of them, and this is probably a bad example, but the heating and cooling in the PSC for the police department. You know, they didn't put that on the CIP, but I think we thought we, it should be in there, should be addressed. Either one, yeah, it's going to stay the way it is, or two, we're going to do something about it. But there's other ones in there that, you know, like for instance, the, the sprinkler system at the PSC, you know, should we be doing that? Last time we knew was about three hundred thousand dollars. If the select board says yes, that's something we want to pursue, then we have to go out and do some research. How much is that now? Is that still three hundred thousand? Is it four hundred thousand dollars? And, uh, so that's the process in terms of then I'm anticipating we go through. And there's no sense sending anybody, somebody out to do a research if we say, nope, not even, not even going to think about it, not even going to think about it. Um, but I think we need to look at each one of those particular things, specifically the ones that the, the THRC is at. Um, I think the select board, uh, has held those, those ones that are in the tool now from the CIP. I think the select board can kind of say, well, they've kind of done their kind of due diligence upfront. But I think we need to go through them one by one with each of the department heads.
Uh, we, we have two open questions here.
Oh.
Um, both from Paul. I, I'm not sure what the first one is. It says communication, question mark. And the second one says CIP subcommittee, question mark, who, when? So that first question, communication, question mark, I, I don't know what that means.
I don't know. Maybe Karen can answer the second one.
Second one, CIP subcommittee, who and when?
Sure. So the CIP subcommittee starts usually every September. It's three members of the planning board, myself and Julie Glover. And we meet with all the department heads. We meet, we do a kickoff meeting, which is, we give them a copy of the CIP with any changes that were made. Update, you know, with all the updates of what's actually there, what was spent, what was deposited, ask them to update their section to see if there's any changes and we have them update the prices with today's dollars. Then we meet as a committee, a few times, make the changes. It, as the department head requests, then meet back with the department head, shows them, show them the changes, discuss any questions that either side might have. And then we adjust the, then we both meet and discuss how much we would have to put in to make the plan work throughout the timeframe. And then out after it's all tweaked, it goes and it's presented to the planning board and adopted by the planning board. And then when it's adopted by the planning board, it gets presented to the select board. So it's from September to December.
I think one of the biggest problems that we've had in the past is that when that happens, there's a department head who speaks on each of the different items and those are really well cared for and looked after. And I don't think that there is anyone who speaks about the buildings. So is there some way that we can start to think about who's going to be that person who speaks about the needs of the buildings?
Well, the select board can do that.
The select board can do that. We kind of all talk about the buildings because we all use the buildings.
But nobody was planning ahead for, you know, the past few decades really on this.
We had, so the, in the CIP, there used to be money in there for a library. And there was money in there for a town hall, but the CIP committee was instructed by the select board a few years ago to take all that out. So we did.
But before that, it had been originally like, uh, I think back in the nineties, like ten thousand and then it was twenty thousand. At some point it made it to fifty, but nothing that we really was planning for.
The CIP committee had, had, had projects in there. I can get that for you.
No, I just want to, I'm concerned about like when we're gone and you know, we were not as focused. Who's that person? Like I, I totally see how we are doing a great job with um, police and fire and those things and thinking about that and planning ahead and making good choices. I just want to make sure that we really understand who's going to say, well, down the road, this building, you know, the public safety complex just isn't filling needs or whatever it is. Who's, I mean, that maybe that's more fire department, but you know what I mean? Like the town offices, who's going to be saying?
And that's the select board.
Well, they've done a.
I think it's easy to say for the last five years, the focus has been on town hall as far as, uh, buildings, et cetera. You know, that, that's exactly where we've spent most of our time is, uh, is town hall. So.
So when we were talking about the town hall and, and Mr. Chapin presented some of this information a few months ago, he, he gave very clear numbers. People talked about them and then very sort of out of thin air numbers were picked that were much smaller and things moved forward. So I guess I, I'm hoping that we have a plan in place that, that really looks into things much more deeply going forward. So we don't just kind of save, but not enough, or not really know what we're saving for. So that's, I think that's why this is a really important feature. And I just want to make sure that we either make sure that the select board is very aware of their responsibility there or that someone else is reminding them when all of us have come and gone. That's, I guess that's my concern.
Well, you're certainly in a position to have an opportunity to donate. So.
Great.
Donate? I think he's asking for money. I think he's asking for money. Know that, but Katrin, you're, you're perfectly correct. Cause this tool is gonna help us with that. Cause right now, yes, we are focusing, focusing on the town hall and the town center buildings. But also additionally, at some point, the PSC is gonna need to have some attention. Transfer station at some point is gonna have, have a intention of some attention and all the other town buildings, like highway department and stuff like that. So if they're in there and at least there's, there's a line that says, you know, PSC upgrade or PSC replace, something like that. At least it won't get lost.
Right.
Cause I think that's what happened when we had the town hall. They started putting money aside and then it kinda got forgotten. And I don't know how many committees I've been on. There's probably people that have been on more committees than me that are looking to address this thing and it's been years. Uh, I think Katrinka said it's like twenty years or something, at least for the library. So going forward, we can't leave our descendants or the people are gonna take over for us in the same position that we're in. So hopefully we try to make it better for them that yes, oh, wow, geez, those lovely people back in two thousand twenty-one started putting five thousand dollars a year away for a new PSA. You know, I'm hoping that something like that happens so that down the road, those people are not in the same position we are because it's in a crap, we're in a crappy position at the moment.
Right. And we're highly motivated because of situation we're in. My concern is I don't want the ball to be dropped once things look good and someone's like, oh, we don't have to. So that's why I just wanna make sure that we have a real grasp on who's responsible. Who do we ask? When you're gathering together department heads, who's the person? You know, if it's a select board, then who's reminding them, you know, that kinda thing. So.
Well, since you'll be running multiple times, so you'll be in charge forty years from now, Mr. Brown and I will be dead and gone and it'll be your responsibility to do this.
Let, let's just make that gone. Okay. You can forget the dead thing. You didn't.
All right. We've lost, we've lost.
Retired from public life. How about that, Mr. Brown? How's that?
That works.
Okay.
There, there is another question. Has the THRC seen this presentation prior to this webinar? Um, and the answer is yes, um, almost.
Yeah.
Um, that, um, they saw the, the PowerPoint presentation um, in an earlier version that had, uh, less animation and fewer, um, diagrams or illustrations, the little graphs that were animated. It didn't have those. Um, and they had, did see the spreadsheet. Um, so um, other than some little features, they did see it prior to this webinar.
Karen's dancing. That means end of the meeting. So.
Somebody's got good tunes back there.
I don't know.
I can hear the music.
So Julie, can you put this on the agenda for our next meeting? To just, you know, accept it and how we're gonna move forward and.
So when you, when you say next meeting, do you mean May third?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think at that time, if we can discuss if the board accepts this particular tool and is gonna use it moving forward and who's gonna support it? And also in terms of setting up a meeting with the department heads, a working meeting to go over these particular things.
Exactly.
Uh, Scott?
Yep.
I, I, we had suggested, uh, there were, um, there was work for the committee to do, the town hall renovation committee.
Yep.
Uh, and some of that is about updating or, or getting more behind, more data behind some of those costs.
Yep.
Um, it's gonna take us, um, uh, two or three weeks to do that.
Okay.
Um, so if you're meeting to, to, to make, um, value judgments about costs.
Yep.
So why don't, until we get, you know, at least some better input on, you know, better numbers for some of these.
Well, at least we can do the other ones, the ones that we don't have. So yep, yep. Well, the other thing also is in terms of if the board wants to, um, extend the charge of the THRC, cause we're there until, what is it? June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one? So I don't know if they wanna continue us or not. So we need to talk about that as well. So.
Well, I think, I think Scott, what we wanna do is, uh, one, obviously look at, look at this tool and, uh, how we implement it, et cetera, et cetera. But we also, we also need to get down to where are we on, uh, each building and, uh, what needs to be done? And so on. So I mean, that's the other discussion we have to have as part of the renovation is what needs to be done to the buildings? And, uh, what's the approximate cost?
Okay. Anything else?
No.
We all good?
I think we're all good.
Any other questions? Oh, there's one question. Oh, I meant, oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I, if anybody can explain that it, cause there's a question and then it says, Annie Kazowski would like to answer this question live.
Oh, can we, yeah, let her do that.
I think it's Paul. I think.
Well, whoever would like to answer the question live.
I, I did that.
All right. I know. Unless Paul or Annie has a, something they wanna say.
Oh, now it says no open questions.
All right. All right. I guess they're, they're good. All right. Good.
Thank you for all that work, everyone. That was an enormous task.
It was great. No, it's great. I mean, it was a good meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night, everyone.